Oh, we did. I think. I think. I think. I think. You have to consider. I think it's common. It's. You got. So. You stop. I thought. I think. Only be.
I think that's why. Well, I. It's absolutely. That's the energy that I think also. I don't think you guys. I don't think people was. He's. Yeah. Don't pay us. Yeah. I'm kind of. Don't. I don't know. Yeah. I think. But. Yeah. Perhaps.
And.
Okay. You know. I feel. I would. You know. I mean. I see. I'm. Yes. Yeah, this is. I don't know. So. So. Well, that's. Yeah. Which I really got.
So. You're awesome. So something. I'll use any of that. Like. So. That. But. I'm.
I'm sorry. I'm taking video or pictures while we. Was.
Yeah, first. Yeah, this is the. The. I'm supporting. I'm. 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 Public. So. Yeah. No, he's. He's. He's.
I think. I think. I think. If you're very.
There'll be. He's not.
I don't. Okay.
Are they? Snapped? They got. Good. Concerned.
Yeah. No. And I'm not. What's this?
I'm also going like. Talking.
I don't. I don't. I. 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 I.
Standing on having you and someone be here and everything. I didn't say.
All right, we'd like to welcome everyone this evening. To comply with our state law as far as what meeting we have to have in what order. We will begin tonight with our RDA meeting and then go into our city council meeting. So I'll turn turn the time over to Mr. Norfelt in this situation.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's so great to have all of you here for our redevelopment agency meeting. I apologize for this and and I hope that you'll be patient with us and stick around for when you have your uh public comment and we. This meeting shouldn't be too long. I call to order the special meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency this May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. At six thirty P M. In the county city council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We excuse uh council member Jake Fatisimaneu. All other members of the agency are present. And we are joined on the dais with Efo Peely, our city manager, and Nicole Kamik, our city recorder. We have an opening ceremony, so I'll turn the time over to Councilmember Christiansen to conduct the opening ceremony.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I. I. Pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. For which it stands. One thing is given under God. And for this role. With the. The. Excuse. Because. I'm. So. Wrong.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the minutes from our meeting of May seventh. To the agency.
Motion to approve the minutes of May seventh.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The the minutes pass unanimously. Next, we have our resolutions, uh number twenty four dash zero two. This is to award a contract to and authorize the execution of a professional services agreement with E V Power Exchange, U S A Corporation. This resolution would allow E V Power Exchange to install and manage a total of twenty six electric vehicle fast chargers at the Maverick Center, Utah Cultural Celebration Center, Fitness Center, The Ridge Golf Course, and Stonebridge Golf Course. The actual cost of this project will be one million seven hundred seventy thousand and change, with the possibility of grants and credits being obtained in the future for uh future cost reduction. We just received approval today, in fact, for an additional five hundred thousand dollar grant for um this project. To the board.
Move for approval of resolution twenty four dash zero two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to mention, I brought this up during study meeting, the I s- I just have reservations, not against sustainability or anything else, just the sheer numbers of percentage wise of E Vs in in West Valley City. Um. You know, I think there's there's going to be a need for this, but I don't know if we're quite there yet. And I understand that there are grants and other monies coming in that are outside of our city, but they're still taxpayer dollars, and I just want to make sure they're spent in the most efficient way. So. That's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'd like to add a few comments that, uh, you know, we passed a resolution to to have uh one hundred percent or net zero emissions by uh twenty thirty, and that's a lofty goal, and I'm not sure that we're going to to meet it, but uh steps like this are are going to help us there. And I agree, there's not a lot of E Vs right now in West Valley City, but it's it's a chicken and egg thing where people don't buy E Vs because there's not enough charging stations. People don't put in charging stations because there are not enough E Vs. And um this money is designed to to help our city and and the the businesses in the redevelopment areas to to attract more people and and um and to to further their goals, which also helps our our city goals. And I I think this is good use of that of that money and and we're setting we're setting a precedent that others hopefully will follow. I I think having E V stations at these areas is is smart and and um helps us to to move forward in sustainability and and we'll be seen as a leader in that, and I think that's that's good for our city. So I and I love that it's a it's a partnership with private entities. You know, we need more public-private partnerships and and work together to to reach the goals of of that we have and the goals that that industry has. Any other comments? All right, we'll go to our recorder for the vote.
Mr. Whitstone?
No.
Mr. Harmon?
No.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
And Chairman Norfelt?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. Resolution twenty four dash zero three is to authorize the expenditure of funds from the Granger Crossing Project area for the purchase of vehicle charging stations. This resolution would authorize the purchase of the E V charging station using funds from the Granger Crossing Project area on city-owned facilities. These funds would be expended by the West Valley City R D A, and because the proposed expenditure is outside of the project area boundary, the board is required to make a direct benefit determination. To the board.
I have moved for approval of resolution twenty four dash zero three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, to our recorder for the vote.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
No.
Mr. Whitstone?
No.
Motion passes by majority. Oh, Chairman Norfelt, sorry.
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. Um, w- we have more resolutions that are very similar to this, so we'll go on to twenty four dash zero four. This is to authorize the expenditure of funds from the Hercules Project area for the purchase of vehicle charging stations. And the reasoning for this is the same as the the reasoning above. To the board.
Move for approval of resolution twenty four dash zero four.
I said second.
Oh, I didn't hear the second. Sorry. And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's have the real call vote.
Mr. Whitstone?
No.
Mr. Harmon?
No.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
Chairman Norfelt?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. Resolution twenty four dashes zero five is to authorize the expenditure of funds from the Jordan River Project area for the purchase of vehicle charging stations. Again, we're trying to make a direct benefit determination because the property is outside the boundary of the project area. To the board.
Move for approval of twenty se- four dash zero six.
I think we're on five.
Oh, five. Moved in the head too fast. Zero five.
Second.
Okay, but maybe I didn't hear it again. All right, um, any other discussion? Let's have the vote.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
No.
Mr. Whitstone?
No.
And Chairman Norfelt?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Resolution twenty four dash zero six is to authorize the expenditure of funds from the North Central Project area for the purchase of vehicle charging stations. Um, for the same reason as the other ones above. To the board.
Move for approval of twenty four dash zero six.
Second. Uh. May I say something?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I uh I don't use the E V, but uh and I don't know how long I in the future I'm gonna use it. To be honest with you, but the thing is uh uh did her from uh um, one of our head of departments, and he says that we took a five hundred thousand dollar uh to, you know, basically to chip in for this project, and then it's wonderful. And you give people have an option to do that. So that why I changed before I took very much kind of like no, 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 but then there's a good uh for people out there to have an option to do this. Also, the we've the we have the funding from uh the Fed, and so that's a good. Just want to say that. I want to say that with you.
Thank you. All right, let's have the real call vote.
Mr. Harmon?
No.
Mr. Whitstone?
No.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
And Chairman Norfelt?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. Now for our new business, we have a resolution twenty four dash zero seven. This is to amend the Southwest Economic Development Area Project Area Plan to remove a parcel. This resolution would remove a parcel from the Southwest Economic Development Area to allow for the consolidation and subdivision of the parcel along with an adjacent property. Because the property is part of an economic development area, the removal of the parcel is necessary to allow for development. And we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty four dash zero seven.
And just so I don't sound so negative, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Whitstone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
Chairman Norfelt?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
This concludes the business of the Redevelopment Agency Board. We have one more motion.
Motion to.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We are adjourned.
Hey, thank you. We will call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. We are beginning our meeting at six forty two P M. In the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. Uh, we have, we will excuse Councilman Fitziamanu. Yeah, present today, we have Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune, myself, Councilman Christiansen, Councilman Norfelt. We're also joined at the dais with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamik. We've already had our opening ceremony conducted in our R D A meeting. And so we will go to our minutes of May seventh, twenty twenty four. Turn those to the council for discussion or a motion.
Move for approval of the minutes of uh May seventh, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those stand approved. We will now accept public comment. Public comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to thirty three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, please approach the microphone. Um, and if you did not have a chance to sign up, please give us your name and address, otherwise just your name at the mic. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once during the comment period. Speakers shall not expect any debate with the mayor, council, or staff. They will have a time to respond after the thirty minutes, and speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, or the members of the council. So um I know last week we had a lot of applause. I don't know that it hampered how many people got to speak, but the more time that people can just get up here, the faster it'll go, and you'll have more opportunity. So we'll go to speaker one. There we go.
Hi, my name's Lana. And I grew up in Salt Lake City and moved around Utah a few times in my life, and the importance of the arts has greatly affected my life in more ways than I can number. It deeply saddens me to hear places that represent inspiration, creativity, and healthy outlets for the youth in the surrounding community to be taken down and replaced. For many years, I had found it very difficult to express myself in a normal way than my neurotypical counterparts. I may have never attended the center that for many others, and even those that are my age or younger have, but I understand what it means to feel closely attached to a place of such significance that I can relatably understand. This must be devastating to those who have grown up and felt attached to it in one way or another. I just want to bring up a few points that may help those of you who are wondering why the arts and theater are so important, such as the inclusive nature of the arts and the underlying culture that it holds, diverse representation. The arts provide a platform for diverse voices and perspectives, whether through visual arts, music, dance, or theater. Artists express their unique experiences, identities, and cultural backgrounds. This representation fosters understanding and empathy among different communities. Community building, arts events, whether a local theater production, a gallery opening, or a street performance bring people together. They create shared experiences, fostering a sense of community and belonging. Social justice movements. Throughout history, art has been a powerful tool for social change. From protest songs to visual art depicting injustice, artists contribute to movements advocating for equality and justice. These points greatly exemplify my concerns for the surrounding community and upcoming generations' opportunity to take advantage of these kinds of places that can potentially contribute to a better future. Not only for them, but for the community as a whole. Although this goes deeper than just West Valley, but there are many other centers around the Salt Lake Valley that contain similar creative outlets for the youth and their communities, that I fear this may set a future precedent for more of these centers to be taken down in the same way. So now I ask for those of you who may feel that it is necessary for this process to move forward. I would hope that instead of sympathizing for those of us who are fighting for our youth's future, that you would rather empathize with us as if your own future depended on it. Thank you for allowing me the time to express my own feelings on the issue and the rest of the speakers.
Hello, uh, my name is Charlie. Um, and I am a creative writing major at Weber State. Growing up, I did not have anything to express myself. Um, had no outlet. I had no knowledge of things beyond myself. And it wasn't until I discovered books and reading, movies, shows that I discovered something more, that I discovered myself, and I discovered others like me. And so whenever I hear of arts, whether it be uh literature or theater or any other form um being removed or reduced, it always saddens me greatly. Because people throughout uh different communities always need something to express themselves and also find others like them. And so um I hope you take this into consideration. Um, it would be a tragedy uh if people just were not able to be able to express themselves and find people similar to them. Um, thank you.
Thank you. You're still on and on, but wish to speak. We swamped. I'll go next. Pardon? We're good.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Bryce Isaacson. I'm an incoming professor of the College of Fine Arts and Communications at Brigham Brigham Young University and editor of Utah's largest arts review organization, U T B A. Like many, the announcement of the West Valley Performing Arts Center closure came as a surprise, and I'm sorry that the building is causing red ink. It sounds stressful uh to see that on your budget. I'm not here to fight for the preservation of a building, but uh rather to offer solutions to help grow the city. First, I encourage you to conduct an economic impact study before moving forward with closure. When my wife and I come to the center uh from Riverton, we don't just see a show there, we eat at nearby restaurants. My favorite is Tuuk Tuuk's, great Thai food. We use the gas stations. Businesses depend on this traffic. Apparently, I've heard Gal um Gallo Loco even extends their hours to accommodate showtimes to make sure they capture people as they exit. Will restaurants be able to operate as they do now without the draw of of the center or another magnet venue like it? How would this closure affect them? What effect would the closure have on property value in the neighborhood? Will youth who would otherwise be gaining skills, confidence, and friends at theater classes and camp end up with nothing better to do than maybe get into trouble? Given these uncertainties, it seems to me that over the long term, the economic impact of losing a a top-notch venue like the center may actually be greater than what the council might be looking at today. West Valley Arts is on an upward trajectory, and I offer my service as an advertising professor to continue this growth at the current center or a new venue. County voters and government members support the arts, and I encourage you to explore bonding a new or renovated home for theater in West Valley. In twenty twenty, the Mid Valley Performing Arts Center was completed in Taylorsville. This beautiful building was funded through a partnership between the city and the city and the county council. West Valley could can explore similar partnerships to refurbish or replace the center. By choosing to preserve and grow the arts, you can continue to draw people like me and their wallets into the city. The arts community stands ready to partner with you to build the arts in West Valley. West Valley City will grow with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker five?
Hello, my name is Anna Caitlin. I would like to congratulate West Valley City and West Valley Arts on the Seven Heart Theater Awards won in twenty twenty three. The West Valley Performing Arts Center has been the stability of so many artists in the greater Salt Lake Theater community. Though on May sixth, in a post addressing the closure of West Valley Performing Arts Center, the West Valley City Government page stated, quote, while this closure is regrettable, it is necessary for the long-term stability of West Valley Arts, close quote. But I do raise the question, when the when the foundation of a house is removed, will it collapse or continue standing? Now, I know this decision couldn't have been an easy one. As a recent West Valley resident, I know it's important for the for the functioning and the stability of the community to have trash pickup paid for, to have education paid for, to have police officers available for accidents on Redwood Road. But I ask, who was there for the functioning and stability of our sanitation workers, teachers, and police officers when they take off their badges and need a break from being our everyday superheroes? What about our grocery store clerks, our gas station attendants, food workers? There is nothing quite like having a stressful day and then being able to sink into a seat and forget about it for at least a couple of hours. There's also nothing like having stressful day and getting to dance or sing or act or sew your way out of it. Theater is equally beneficial for the audiences as it is the personnel involved. And one of the most beautiful things about the West Valley City is the diversity. My favorite part about living here was always being able to walk out in public and seeing people who look like me. Not only that, but being a community member and having an experience of sitting in an audience and seeing yourself, your family, and your culture on stage was a privilege that myself and others like me did not take for granted. It is rare to have such a space in the state of Utah. West Valley Performing Arts Center was the first place that I felt seen, heard, and respected as a performer of color. West Valley Performing Arts Center was the first place I felt like I had a theatrical home. I'm sure any other people here advocating for West Valley Performing Arts Center knows the feeling of content that hits you the minute you walk in the door. Home is different for everyone. For some people, it's a football stadium. I know I feel tingly inside whenever I watch the New York Giants play, or whenever I'm in the student section for the Oklahoma Sooners football games. For others, it's the Raboas that Empas or Euros or Haystacks. For some, it's vintage vinyl collections or Christmas or Sunday Family Time. And for many people, the majority of the people in this room, it's the West Valley Performing Arts Center. To be in a diverse community with a diverse theater, doing diverse shows and events is a privilege, and it's not one this community can lose. We ask that you partner with your community by allowing the West Valley Performing Arts Center to keep performing. Thank you.
Speaker five? Which was Elizabeth?
Thank you. Hello, I'm Elizabeth Waite. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you and for being so respectful of this process. So every Tuesday, I conduct tours at the State Capitol Building. I did that with student groups this morning. And one of the favorite parts of the tour is when the students are sitting in the House Gallery, and we discuss this kind of the civics of what goes on in that room, what the people do who sit in the representative seats below, and even the relationship with the ones where we're sitting in the gallery. I described a little about the lawmaking process and the procedural rules, and the voters elect the people every two years that sit in the seats below. Today, a teacher asked um me to explain about the significance between the places, the place where we were sitting and the seats down below where the legislators sit. I pointed out that at the front of the House of Representatives are the words populi, which is a Latin phrase which means voice of the people. I explained that meant the legislators had a responsibility to learn and understand the people in their neighborhood and use what they learned when they discussed and when they voted. Their votes were representations of the people's votes. It's based on a relationship. That's what we expect of all of our policymakers. We expect acknowledgement. We expect professionalism. We expect educated, informed decision-making. We expect that kind of role modeling in the processes to oversee the operations of our community. We expect a trusting relationship. That's why we're disappointed with the announcement about our theater. We are in shock. We saw no agenda for discussion with the public or in the public view. We learned there was incomplete understanding of our theater's operations, successes, plans, projections, all the realities of a theater that in a. all the realities of a theater that in a short time has become a landmark for its productions and the performance companies it assembles. Sadly, since then, I have even heard suspicions of this possibly being a pattern of potential other issues about which decisions could be made in the same manner with selective consultation and surprise announcements. And, and that's hard for me to say, but I literally have heard that. So we have an ask about our theater. We see this as a hope, this two-year concept as a hope and a real possibility. We see this as an opportunity for our city council and manager to take a true and thorough look at our theater programs, the professional management, ideas and plans, and the realistic projections to continue the wonderful connections our city makes in our West Valley City Performing Arts Center.
Okay, thank you for your time. Speaker six. Speaker six, Shelby.
My name is Shelby Mon. My wife and I live in West Valley for, we've been here for 10 years now. We live in District Four. We have enjoyed watching the city grow and improve. I enjoyed last week's meeting where the Parks Department received several outstanding awards. I take my, our dog to the parks almost every day. I golf at the golf courses and love going along the canal trail and exploring the community and watching and seeing how the community has grown over the years and how the city has invested in it. We take pride in living here and constantly talk about how great our city is. A large part of that pride comes from the West Valley Performing Arts Center. As performers and residents, we were elated to hear of the reopening of the center under the West Valley Arts and watched it thrive through COVID to become one of the top three rated theaters in the valley. I have performed in the building when it was the Hill Center Theater. My wife has performed multiple times down with the current arts council. The production value, talent level, and overall theater experience is known throughout the theater community. Behind the curtains of all the local theaters, actors, technicians, choreographers are all talking about and preparing for the next auditions at the West Valley Performing Arts Centers. Performers of all walks of life and experiences are drawn to this theater. It is known for the types of shows it produces and the quality of those shows. West Valley City is arguably the most diverse city in the county, and between 2010 and 2019 was one of the top four cities in the nation with the highest change in racial makeup. Community venues for the arts can be tools to connect diverse segments of society to cultural experiences, allowing spaces and opportunities to communicate their stories. Through artful expression empowers them to feel connected to their communities and become actively involved in its well-being. An invitation has been extended to partner with West Valley Arts and continue an open discussion about the future of West Valley Performing Arts Center. As a resident of the city, I highly encourage you to sit at the table and accept this partnership. Work with the people whose lives these decisions in, impact. City Manager Peely, last week you mentioned that you don't know much about theater, but you do know about people's livelihoods. But what about when the arts and theater are people's livelihoods? Like sports teams and city councils, theater is to others a family, a home, a place of pride, acceptance, teamwork, and commitment. I implore the city council to open your thoughts, hearts, and ears to your West Valley City family who is pleading to work with you and keep this unique center of art, music, and community a source of pride for the West side. Thank you.
Speaker seven.
Hello. My name is Brooklyn Kohler and I've lived or owned a home in Salt Lake County for a little over forty-four years. I grew up in a household of five kids, student of grounded school districts. Uh, my brothers all played football as soon as they were able to sign up for Little League. And my brother went on to play at Snow College. He attributes his time playing sports as an instrumental trajectory in learning how to be a team player, problem solve, build confidence, communicate, respect other people often on the field, accept failure and defeat, set goals, learn how to lead and follow, and he currently runs a warehouse with a hundred and forty-five employees that report directly to him just five minutes from here. My path was a little different. My safe space has been the theater since I was a teenager. I participated in community productions in grade school and college and beyond, and led a national Broadway touring company for three years on the Hairspray National Tour. I attribute these same leadership skills, confidence, and problem solving to my time in the theater. I have never questioned how valuable green space is to our community. I firmly believe that the importance of our recreational programs and rec centers for our communities. While these programs don't turn a profit, it is a significance to our community as it encourages physical and mental well-being and provides a network of possibility to our youth. When life is hard at home or at school, they can be supported by friends and neighbors and coaches. And I can say the same thing about theater. I have never questioned how valuable a performing arts space is to our community. I firmly believe in the importance of the arts programs. While these programs don't turn a profit, so often don't turn a profit, it is significant to our community as it encourages physical and mental well-being and provides a network of possibility to our youth. And when life is hard at home or at school, they too can be supported by their friends, their neighbors, and their production teams. I know there is concern about profitability and overall costs. Both require funding. West Valley City is the second largest city in the state. You house thirty city parks, five cu- county parks, two pools, a performance space, and a cultural center. The beauty of West Valley City has historically been due to its diversity of offerings to its community, sports, parks, and rec, theater and entertainment, food, drink, and shopping. I ask that you as a city council weigh the value of these offerings equally, and please do not close the door to a part of the community that needs a place to thrive. Please keep West Valley performing. Thank you.
Speaker eight.
My name is Walt Sorensen. I live in the Highbury neighborhood. I am a lifelong resident of the city. I am an artist, I'm an engineer, and I have served the city as an artist delegate to our sister city in Nantou, Taiwan. Following last week's announcement regarding the Performance Arts Center, I've had many conversations with my neighbors, family, and friends in the city and surrounding areas. There has been three prevailing comments made, but by far the most common comment is, we have a theater? Followed by great interest in the current theater season. Others have expressed their love of the current theater group and the theater building. People are excited to see our amazing performance arts group at our amazing performance arts center. The limited awareness of, in the community of the continuing operations at the theater only goes to show how little movement the limited past marketing has had. Mayor, I asked the city to immediately put out a press release discussing the current work towards extending and saving our theater. The press releases last week raised, raised great uncertainty for many people in trying to support and sustain our Performing Arts Center. Only by clearly announcing the work going on can there be, the air be cleared and the work in earnest can begin. Along with that, I asked the city to donate a booth at West Fest for the Performing Arts Center and the Performing Arts Group to advertise the current theater season and the fundraising efforts to save the theater. I asked the city to rise to the occasion, to hoist the banner, to sound the rallying cry, to find support. Please do not shrink from this challenge to save a jewel of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker nine.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Matthews. I moved into West Valley about nineteen years ago, and two of the, two of the council members live in my neighborhood. When I moved in, all the houses around me had single families in them. They were single-family dwellings. Now the house to the left of me is uh, Airbnb for skiers, and the house to right to me is a short-term rental and has as many as ten houses, I mean, ten cars parked in front of it. Uh, often I, I get up in the morning, I find somebody's blocking my driveway. I can still get out, but it's irritating to find somebody with their car three feet into my driveway. And I understand there's been some discussion about limiting or eliminating overnight parking, I suppose, in residential areas, and I am all for that if the council is considering it. One, it would reduce um, it would reduce these multi single individual housing such as the one I have to the west of me. Where as many as ten different people live there and there's ten different cars and they're parked all over. Two, it would make things a lot better as far as uh, snow removal in the winter. I find snow just piled in front of my driveway and it takes me hours to get rid of it. And the reason I have such difficulty is because the cars parked in the street and the snowplow dips over in front of my driveway and deposits a lot of snow. So I think it would be, it would improve the quality of life for the city if we restricted how many cars that were parked on the street and in an unpaved areas. And I understand there's a possibility you might be hiring. If, if this would pass, you would also be hiring uh, additional parking enforcement, which would probably be working in the evening. And I fully support that. I do want to say I thank the council and the mayor and all the city workers. For the time I've lived in West Valley, it's been very enjoyable, other than my neighbors. I know you all really, really try to do a good job. I s- I love working with the city on the uh, National Night Out and the block parties that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker ten.
Thank you for this opportunity. I can't hear anybody back there. This needs to be a little closer. Um, my name is Teddy Tuttle Wixom. I am an author and I have a new book coming out this week. It's about King Tut the Musical, and it's been novelized because it's so hard to get anybody to put on a musical, to wrangle musicians, except Mr. Sweeney, he could do it. So the importance of the arts for me, I just feel like crying. I'm a graduate from BYU in English and I'm a writer. I came from a small rural community and we had a hell theater not far away. I grew up doing theater. My mother was the director. I would like to perform King Tut the Musical at this theater, but it can't be torn down or you can't do that. I'm not clear on the problem of closing this theater down, leveling it or selling it unless there are ulterior motives. This building is amazing and a great asset to the city of West Valley City. I've lived here for thirty-six years and I love, I love that building. And yes, the restaurants are helped by it. We need the art center. We need relief from our three jobs that we work daily. I have eight children. It keeps me pretty busy. I understand the roof needs to be repaired or replaced. And number two, the mechanical inside stage is not functional. Therefore, it is too expensive to fix. Don't you have insurance for this building? I understand that we need an inspiration for broken as well as well people. Are you telling me that the West Valley City, the second largest city in Utah, cannot afford to fix a small roof or replace a non-functional stage? That's idiocy. We need the arts. It supports our restaurants and emotional needs. It seems like West Valley City has enough to do EV stations when we don't really need them. If they put them in houses, it would, and I had my eight children, it would make my electric veil go through the roof. So it's good they're not at my house. So I ask, can you not update a lovely art, performing arts center? Have you ever heard of restoration of buildings from fifty years ago or a hundred years ago? It is possible. My nephew restored a great theater back in New York City. He's from Idaho. He's an engineer, but he's never taken lessons as an engineer. This is a large venue and only one of its sons. Pardon?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. The art center needs to stay.
All right, Eve. Page two.
I appreciate the chance to be here. Thank you so much for listening and for volunteering your time and giving your giving your hearts to this community. I have two boys who have autism. They're incredibly different. I am not gonna look behind me except I can kind of see you now. I want everybody in this room to raise your hand if you have been affected by someone who has autism. Okay, there we go. As a mom, the best way for me to teach them is to take them to the theater. I can talk till I'm blue, but when they get, when they get into the theater and they see on the stage the stories, they are so moved. And they teach, the theater teaches my boys in a way that I simply can't. The theater is a place for us to encourage one another, teach one another, for us to grow together. Every community can provide housing and jobs, gas stations, and go V, go EV stuff. That's fantastic. Um, okay. They can provide that, but if we don't provide the arts, if we don't provide a way for our children, our neighbors to find entertainment, to go out, give them a reason to spend their money, they're gonna go spend it somewhere else. Don't you want them to spend their money here? That's all I have to say. Thank you again.
Okay, we have two minutes. Was there anyone else that wished to speak at this time?
My name is Mary Flynn, and I'm already gonna cry. I love the theater. I was a teacher, I'm retired now, but I took my class every year to our theater. And I taught them to love it, and they did. I had a student visit me today and said it was the best year he ever had in school because of the theater, because he learned how to speak in front of people, because he was able to address people, and it taught him so much. I just bought tickets for my church group, a hundred tickets to go to the theater in August to see Legally Blonde. I can't quite understand why we would want to lose such a precious and valuable resource to our citizens, to our people. I do want to say before I finish that I appreciated you last week when you stopped the meeting and talked with us. That was very nice of you and very good for us to be able to see and understand more what you were seeing and understanding. Thank you for listening to us. Please continue. But please realize that we need that theater. We need it so badly for our citizens, for our people. And it's our pride and joy. It's something we love. It's deep in our hearts. We need to keep it. Thank you.
Speaker Peely, I know you had something to say.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. And I, I took a lot of time last week, and so I don't want to take more time. The only thing I would say is I do appreciate those that have reached out with some solutions. And uh, don't, and as I've, I've mentioned to to uh, some of you earlier, we, we are listening to some of these solutions at this point. So we really don't have anything to, to bring forward right now, but I appreciate those of you that have come and are presenting some for our staff to review and bring back to council for review.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to say something.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just wanna thank you, all of you, to come here tonight and share your concerns, and I appreciate it very much. And um, just like uh, last time, uh, Mr. Philly, he says about the uh, maintenance, it's a cost so much money. Like twenty twenty-one and six hundred thousand dollars, and twenty twenty-two is about eight hundred thousand dollars. And twenty twenty-three is about one point four something, and twenty twenty-four, one point six mil. The thing is, uh, and also you prepared, right here, he gave it piece of paper right here. If you prepare for that, it's gonna be, gonna cost you about seven point six mil, million dollars. If you prepare for that, it's going to cost you about 7.6 million dollars. And I'm listening to you, all of you. We have 12 people came up and spoke. And six of you is from West Valley City, and six of you is not from West Valley City. And here, we have 145,000 people here in our city. And I came here in 2011. And the reason people did vote me in because at that time they increased the property tax for 17%. And people were just outrageous. They were so mad. And that's how they voted me in. They said, "I don't want to see any or property tax increase this much." And to be fair, like 145,000 people out there, if you put 17% property tax increase to fix this, going to be 1,000 people going to come here. Boycotts, you know, come here and you can hear them. You think about, we have to, as a council member, we have to look at both ways, how to help to make that happen. And you see that, I want to share that with you. You want to see another 17% property tax increase to fix this. And that's the things I want to say with you tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would move for a 10-minute recess to digest some of the things we've heard.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll stand recess for 10 minutes. Be back at 7:28 and finish our regular agenda.